Get a motion, and then you ask for a motion to approval of the affidavit pertaining to executive session. Okay, now, when you get to that, you can either keep the floor, or you can relinquish your chairship back to me. You can say, "I give back my seat to the chair." I'll relinquish my seat to the chair. Does that sound okay?
Okay.
If you're willing and able, if you'd be kind enough to stand for the invocation, and if you would, remain standing for the pledge. Dear Lord, we make to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good, and recognize our responsibilities to the past and to the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to recognize, over to my left, our new Commissioner, Blake Prince, District Four, and then also, over to my right, Commissioner Gary Barham, District Three, was re-elected for four years, and further to my right, the Honorable Bruce Holmes was re-elected for another four years. So having said that, will the regular meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine AM Tuesday, January the sixth, 2015, come to order? Do we have somebody that we consider approving the agenda as published?
So moved.
Have a motion, District One?
Second.
Second, District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. All opposed, same sign, okay? Next, we have the awesome responsibility of electing a vice chair. And I understand that the way we do this is, based on past practice, we do it in sequence, and we do it in turn. So, having said that, we have a resolution in the book for the Henry County Board of Commissioners to appoint Commissioner Bea Moss of District One to vice chair, effective immediately, for a term to exceed December thirty-first, 2015. If somebody would move in that direction, or somebody else has a nominee?
So move.
Have a motion, District Five?
Second.
Second, District Three, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you so much.
You are now the vice chair. Next, we have the... How did I get out of sequence? I got two agendas here. Did we put a new one out this morning? Okay. I'm gonna take this agenda, so we're gonna leave... This is the one I've been going by, but evidently they took this out. I didn't get the update. Okay, so we're gonna leave the appointment of the vice chair intact, so we're gonna back at, and we're gonna recognize Commissioners for completing the ACCG County Commissioners' Certification Program. Melissa, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This morning, we would like to recognize the recent accomplishments of three of Henry County's Commissioners for completing the University of Georgia's Carl Vincent Institute of Government, and the ACCG's Lifelong Learning Academy Certified County Commissioner Program. Today, we recognize District One Commissioner Bea Moss, District Three Commissioner Gary Barham, and District Five Commissioner Bruce Holmes for their outstanding efforts in completing the certification process. And it's important to note that the ACCG Lifelong Learning Academy Core Certification includes eight courses, as well as a two-day Leadership Academy, for a total of sixty-six credit hours. These Commissioners attended classes and completed rigorous coursework, which included County Government 101, County Government Law, Finance, Human Resources, Ethics, Property Appraisal and Taxation, Economic Development, Public Health and Safety, and Leadership, and we congratulate them on their accomplishments. And we have some certificates from the ACCG that we'd like to present.
Authority, who's gonna introduce the new hire for the Director of Development.
Good morning, and welcome to the world of economic development, and we look forward to serving with our team, and we thank you for supporting the economic development here in Henry County. As Chair of the Henry County Development Authority, it's my privilege and my sadness to be allowed to be on your agenda this morning for two facts that are, we hope, going to be the good for the individuals involved, as well as for our Henry County. First, we would mention and note to record that the longtime Director of Henry County's Economic Development Function, the Henry County Development Authority, Mr. Bob White, is leaving us, and Bob, I'd like for you to stand up, so everybody can remember Bob, and let's give Bob a round of applause for all the great things he's done for Henry County. And as the page turns, we move to the gentleman that we will present for your edification and approval today. He tries to convince people that he's a Georgia boy, but I think he's a Florida boy, but we know he's not an Alabama boy, because he doesn't like Alabama football, so he's not an Alabama boy, but he went to the University of Georgia, so I guess he's a Georgia boy, and he lives in Decatur, so I guess he's a Georgia boy, and he spent part of his life in Gwinnett County, so I guess he's a Georgia boy. He comes to us from the state of Georgia, where he was a senior project manager with the Department of Economic Development, and that prepared him, along with his master's degree from Georgia Tech. I would like to present to you this morning, and you will greet him, and he will be setting up individual meetings with each of you after today. I think he's already got one scheduled for tomorrow with Mr. Prince, and we look forward to a long relationship with him. He's a highly qualified individual. Yes, he probably needs to shave, as I do too, but, you know, just forgive him for that little beard, and we'll move forward with that. And we'd like to welcome today, to the post of the Director of the Henry County Development Authority, Mr. Charlie Mosley. Charlie, will you come up, please? And I think Charlie has a couple of words he wants to share with you.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me today, and giving me the chance to say a few words. I'd like to start by saying I'm grateful and excited for the opportunity to serve as the next Executive Director for the Development Authority. I look forward to getting to know each of you, and working with you for the better of Henry County and its citizens. As Bill mentioned, and as you all know, Bob White has done a tremendous job in this role for nearly two decades. I appreciate all of his guidance during this transition. He is an invaluable resource to me and to this community. In my previous experience with the Georgia Department of Economic Development, I had the opportunity to work in Henry County, and learn a little bit about the opportunities here, and what makes it such a great place to live. Over the holidays, my wife and I had a chance to drive around and see some of the natural beauty and quality of life assets that are in abundance here. It's no surprise that this community's been one of the fastest-growing in Georgia and the nation over the last twenty-plus years. I'd like to thank the members of the Development Authority, staff, and council for the support that they've shown, and the warm welcome I've received from the leaders and community members that I've met in my short time on the job. Again, look forward to working with each of you, with the Development Authority, and all the key stakeholders here in Henry County. Together, I know we can build on the foundation and successful track record of economic development in this great community. Thank you.
I would also, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, recognize also, for the record, the two members of the Development Authority that are present this morning, and we are not having a call meeting, and this is not a special session. We have Mr. Charles Mobley, and he is present with us, and Mr. John Bozeman, and also, you'll notice, on the row, sitting behind us, immediately behind us, is our General Counsel, Rod Meadows. So, God bless you, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to approve this. I just got a text that...
It's not broadcasting. We're not being broadcasted? Is it being broadcasted?
They know. I guess they're working on it.
Okay.
They know.
Okay, we'll move on. Next, we have Board and Authority Appointments. All of District Four Appointments have been deferred, since he's new to the arena here, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Okay. So, first one on the agenda is Henry County Development Authority. It appears that District Five has an appointee.
You don't have it in the agenda? It's Horace Moore. Let me pull it up, 'cause I have the wrong agenda in my book as well. It's Horace Moore, who's the new appointee for the Development Authority, District Five.
Second.
Okay, so you put that in the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a resolution in the book, if you want to... We have a resolution in the Henry County Board of Commissioners appointing citizens to the Henry County Development Authority, and it says, "Now therefore, it be resolved that Henry County Commissioners hereby appoint the following representative to serve," so District Four has got deferred, so we will place your appointee's name in this... Mr. Moore, is that what he said?
Horace Moore.
Horace Moore?
Horace Moore.
H-O-U.
I move that we appoint Horace Moore to the Development Authority.
Okay. Okay, I'm told that we now... Lifetime video. Anyway, we have a motion on the floor to appoint from District Five, Horace Moore. Somebody move that? We have a motion for the District Five.
So move.
Second, District Two, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. We have a resolution in the book, appointing citizens to the Henry County Rec. Board. As mentioned, District Four is deferred, and according to the resolution, District Five has appointed Mr. Eugene Edwards.
So move.
Have a motion, to have second?
Second.
Second, District Two, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have the Henry County Library Board, and that would be a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, appointing citizens to the Henry County Library Board. District Four deferred, and if this is correct, Rita Bailey, is that your choice?
So move.
Have a motion, a resolution?
Second.
Second, from District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have the Henry County Zoning Advisory Board. We have numerous on that. Okay, we have District One, and I'm gonna appoint Larry Bab. Okay, District Two? District Three? District Four is deferred, District Five?
Delander Nelson.
Who?
Delander Nelson.
Oh, he's still on there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a motion to accept it.
Who did you say for District Four?
I didn't.
You give me the chair.
I didn't. I passed that. I'm sorry, District One.
District One, Larry Head. Reappointing Larry Head.
Okay, Larry Head. I wrote down Larry Head. Why I did it, I don't know, but anyway, I did. Okay.
Sorry about that.
So now, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to appoint the citizens as nominated by the Board. If somebody move in that direction? Have a motion, District Two? Second, District Five, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have the Henry County Water Authority. We have... It looks like the full slate, so District One?
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Mike Bar.
District Two?
Reappointing Rick Jones.
District Three?
Reappointing Jimmy Carl.
Deferred District Four, District Five?
Kalada Harrell.
Okay, does somebody move in that direction?
So move.
Have a motion, District Five, Second, District One, any further discussion? The discussion for me is, I think that all the people on here are acceptable. I know these people, but it's one on here I think is definitely of conflict interest. So, having said that, I will be voting no, so all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Henry County Council on Aging, it says Appointments three per District.
Just District Four and Five.
I'm getting to the sheet here. The sheet has all the dates on it. Okay. It appears we have three for District Four this up, which has been deferred, and we have three for District Five that expire... expired. So we have a resolution in the book to appoint Council on Aging from District Five. You got three.
Yeah, I move to appoint Houston Nelson, Dr. Jacqueline Bryant, and Mildred Smeltz.
That's in the motion. Somebody second a motion?
Second.
Second, District Four, all in favor? Correction, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we have a resolution, a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners appointing one member to the Henry County Board of Assessors due to the expiration of Samuel C. Chafin. Does anybody... I think Samuel's done a good job, and it takes a long time to get these people trained, so I would... Sir?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a resolution to approve Samuel C. Chafin.
Second.
Have a motion, District Two, second from District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the Council of Aging, I had one for you.
I think you brought it up. Council of Aging. Okay, which one did you have? You got Barbara Price, Sons, and Davis?
Barbara had to step down due to illness, so I'd like to defer that appointment till next meeting, because the lady that I'm speaking with, one of the couple more days to think about.
Okay. Deferred. Anybody have any objections to that? Thank you. Next, we have a request from Mr. Bill Tony to appear before the Board to discuss County Manager and Commissioners' comments. You get fifteen minutes. Come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Tony, sixteen fifty-two Highway one fifty-five North. I have a serious problem with it being not televised right now. I've been coming to meetings for a long time, and...
They are televised.
They are not televised.
Oh.
Right now, if you... You just said it, you got a text, it's being blocked. I like to reserve my time and come back to where it is televised, soon as the technical department gets theirs done. I feel like this right here, somebody didn't want to hear me speak today. So, what are we doing?
Being televised is not part of the curriculum of the regular board meeting. So if the Board wanted to move in that direction, we could do that, otherwise, we would continue proceeding.
Let me say this, I think it's wrong, but I understand the rules. What I'd like to talk about is, well, first, I'd like to welcome this gentleman.
It's running. I don't know how you form an opinion, but it's... They indicate it's running.
I just streamed it to the laptop, and we checked the TVs in there, and they're on the TV.
On the TVs now?
Okay. Okay, been resolved. Go ahead.
We're fine. I just got a text, though, that it's not coming out the other end, but anyway, I'd like to thank all the... Welcome, Mr. Prince, thank the Commission for letting me come up here, and thank our guys in blue and brown for the good jobs that they have done. In my career, I've been called a lot of things, but I've never been called a possum before. I think it was really inappropriate. I think it's part of a bullying tactic to shut me up, and I think our county manager is... That's his MO, that he bullies people, and he does things this way. This right here, well, I don't think that the county checked this gentleman out before we got him, but he worked for Ken Feinberg. This right here is an article that they wrote that... That when he worked for Ken Feinberg, that you had Joe Bonner, Congressman from Alabama, that didn't allow him back in his office. He told him he wasn't welcome there anymore for treating the people the way he treated them with his arrogance and everything, and his bullying tactics over there. Mr. Bonner, I did some research on him, and he's probably one of the best congressmen that's ever been in Alabama. He got elected with a sixty-three percent, sixty-three percent rating on his... When he was elected over there. With Mr... When Mr. Walker was there, within eighteen months, from what the articles say, within eighteen months, the Attorney General of Alabama filed a lawsuit against Ken Feinberg, which he headed up, from what I understand, and what I've read about him, he headed up everything. With this bullying, and the thing that he says to the employees, that he's got five commissioners, he can do about what he wants to do, that's not right. That's just not right. We need to go ahead and terminate this guy's contract. We need to get him gone. He asked a lot of questions the last meeting of himself, and he answered them all himself, but he wasn't truthful with himself. He said, "Did he ever wasted money?" He said, "No." Yes, he's wasted money. We've moved his office from here to the end of the hall, and he set up a big office down there. I don't know if all the public knows about that. But then we get a new building, eighty thousand dollar lease, from what I understand, he was a big part of that. Eighty thousand dollar lease to rent a building, and we've got a building over on eighty-one, the bank building, that we're having to heat and cool. So, as far as wasted money, I think it's been wasted. We had to renovate this office again. I think it's twice we've spent money on this office, and it's just not right. I think that... I think that he's probably been really, really bad for the county. I think it's time that... I think it's time that he goes. As far as speaking your mind and your First Amendment rights here, we got, and I think they're trying to... Mr. Holmes and Mr. Press are all trying to shut me up, pretty much, but we have a First Amendment right to speak, and we have a lot of people that's died for that right. And Mr. Holmes, you said the last time, this needs to stop. All this stuff needs to stop. You're absolutely right. It does need to stop. I think this right here is what they told Martin Luther King, you know, seriously. I mean, it's not funny. That's what he... That's what his... That was his battle. That's what he had... That's what he had going for him, is the First Amendment. That's why he could assemble, and we have the right to assemble, and we have the right to challenge our government. We have a right to see what's going on, and nobody... And let me tell you, I'm almost seventy years old. I've been called a possum now, above many other things, and I'm not gonna let you guys bully me, or intimidate me into checking in and seeing what's going on, and try to correct what's wrong. It's just not gonna happen. Now, like I said, I'm almost seventy years old. I've been around the block a time or two, and it's just... It's just not gonna happen. We got... We got a new lease on a golf course. We... Mr... From what I understand, it was led by Mr. Walker again, that we're gonna go up on their rent six hundred dollars a month, but from what I could gather, we're gonna spend close to six hundred thousand dollars. I met with a golf course owner yesterday, yesterday afternoon, and we went over all these repairs and everything, and he's looked at cotton fields. He's looked at it to rent it. And he told me yesterday, he would be willing, if they did all this stuff, he would be willing to give three thousand dollars a month, and he'd be more than happy to give three thousand dollars a month for that place. Well, we went over everything, the irrigation system, we went over all the capital improvements, the pro shop, everything. We came up with a conservative figure of five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Well, in the emails that I just got from Mr. Walker, his office, it says, and this is Jason Sweniger, that they'd be happy to renew the lease, and for doing almost six hundred thousand dollars worth of work, they're gonna give us Senior Day, they're gonna give us... to give us Ladies Day, they're going to give us Family Friday, and they're going to give us some discounts on merchandise. They said that they would be happy to do it, in return for the repairs performed by the county, we will be, we'll do this for the county residents. Almost six hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs needs to be done to this place. That's, I don't know who negotiates these deals, but I promise you, you wouldn't make it very much, very long in business negotiating deals like that. Go up six hundred dollars a month to invest almost six hundred thousand dollars. Now, in the past, we were talking about possums, you know, you've got, you know, God created everything, everything on this earth for a reason, and the possum, I guess he put on this earth to clean up things. Now, you can call me a possum, you can call me anything you want to, but that's what we're here for, and that's why you guys were elected. I came into this, and I'll be honest with you, I didn't, I didn't realize what all was involved until we got started. And when I hit, you know, the campaign trail over two years ago, I made a lot of promises to people. Every one of you guys made a lot of promises to people. I've sat with, with you guys for hours, talking about what we need to do. Y'all made promises, and you made promises to me on what we were going to get accomplished. And I hope, I hope and pray, that every one of you remember every promise you made, because I told people when I was running, that regardless of whether I won or whether I lost, I'm going to see this thing through until we can get this county straightened out. Now...
This right here?
This is some of the stuff, and this is when we were running, these were problems that everybody was facing. All these properties, we bought over fifty-four million dollars worth of properties, fifty-four, over fifty-four million, we don't need a piece of those properties right there, we don't need one of them, because of past, not you guys necessarily, maybe, maybe one, maybe one of y'all, y'all, or two of y'all were involved in some of this stuff, but this is the kind of stuff to where if you'd had possums running around back in, back in this time, we might, we might have saved some money. We took, our reserves are down, totally down, and this is some of the reason that we are down, that, you know, we, we can't afford to spend money like this. Taxpayers, they deserve better than this, and, you know, you got, you got a new guy here now, Mr. Prince, we've sat and talked, Mr. Moss, we've sat and talked, Gary, every one of you guys. I don't think I've ever sat down off from here with Mr. Holmes, but you guys are going to have to get on, you have to get with the program. We've got to clean this county up, we've got to get everything back the way it's supposed to be, get your reserves back up, get the taxes down, give the people a break. Tax, you know, your housing values are starting back up, let's make good use of our time. You know, if, all y'all got to do is just do your job, do it like you said you'd do it, and get on board, get on board with the, with the chairman and, and let's get this thing moving forward. You know, you got, y'all can't shut people, shut people down like this. I'm not going to be bullied, and there's a bunch of people here who's not going to be bullied. Now, I think, I think you've got a, you've got a good person that works in the, in the county manager's office. I think Sherry is a, I think she can, she can do the job, I think you jumped over, jumped over the best person to get the worst person. That's my opinion, you know, but people running around saying, "I got five commissioners." I hope, if he says it now, I hope he says, "I got four commissioners," you know, you know, "I can do whatever I want to." It's just like the President of the United States saying, "I got a pencil, I got a pen, and I got a phone, and do what I want to do." Well, it needs to stop here, we're watching, we're going to, we're going to hold everybody's feet to the fire. And trust me, we need to get, it does need to stop, it does need to stop. And, you know, I don't enjoy coming up here and talking to you guys, I just want, I just want what's, what's done, done right. Now, I don't know on this golf course, I don't know what the answers are. I've looked at it from a business standpoint, we paid twenty-two million dollars, and we're paying almost half a million dollars a year interest, and I can't figure out how to bail us out of that one. And then it's eating us, eating us up every, every, every year, and your taxes that you could have been collecting, don't even, the rent don't even cover the taxes you could have been collecting on that thing. So you need to get on board. These properties, county manager's office, we, you know, we talked about, I talked with Mr. Barham, Mr. Moss, about renting out some properties. I met with Mr. Barham about renting out properties. I had a friend of mine that was interested in the old fire station, he called the county manager's office to find out how to rent it, how, what the procedures were, and called three times, never got a call back. That's not how we do business, that's not how I do business. You get, get on, get on with the program, get these buildings, all these properties sold that we don't need, we got plenty we don't need, let's get rid of this stuff, get the money back in our tax, in our, our reserves, and then our, so we can get some tax relief in this thing. Now, it ain't going to be done overnight, I know that, but I tell you what, if y'all get on board, y'all start looking at this stuff, going over, making some right decisions, and not be one of the, but one of the ones with these backroom deals and everything else. I guess time's about up. I thank you very much for your time, have a great day.
Thank you so much. Moving on on the agenda, Public Works, we have a resolution requesting authorization to purchase a tractor for the Department of Transportation, Terry McMeckles. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. On June the third of twenty fourteen, the Henry County Board of Commissioners approved the purchase of four Kubota tractors that, with four ten-foot bush hog mowers on the back, that we immediately put into service. On October seventeenth, twenty, of twenty fourteen, one of the tractors was traveling down eighty-one, headed to Jake Lewis Road in order to cut the grass in the right of way. The operator intended to turn left when the motors behind the tractor attempted to pass the tractor. The motor, the motors totaled the tractor, the mower part of it was not damaged, tractor was, and we're thankful that our employee only received minor injuries. I'm going to put a picture of the tractor. As you can see, the tractor was hit in the side, totaled the tractor, so we're here to, we have filed a claim with the insurance company, and they are going to reimburse the county for the tractor, I believe the sum of thirty-five thousand, five hundred. Vincent's here today, if we have any questions about that. We then tried to see what the closest replacement tractor that was available, and it is a same kind of model, but a four-wheel drive tractor. The cost of that is forty-two thousand, eight eighty-six. We would like to seek approval to buying, to buying this tractor as it is on the state contract. There's going to be, I might add, there's going to be some substantial changes to the tractors, some EPA or EPD requirements that are going to make the tractors go up about, we think about four, five thousand dollars. So from what they were, I think there's some new, new fuel type stuff they're putting on them. So the net, net effect is, we think the new tractors will still be at this same replacement cost of forty-two thousand dollars. The difference, of course, between the tractor on the screen and the one that we're asking to buy is four-wheel drive. We actually, none of our tractors to this date are four-wheel drive, so this will be something that we think might be a good addition, that and it's available, and it's the only one that, this year's model that we found that we could buy on state contract. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Yes, sir.
Is the insurance company going to cover the forty-two thousand, or they only going to give us the thirty-five?
The insurance company, my understanding, have we got to check, Vincent?
Did you state your name and your title when you come up here, please, for the audience to know who you are?
Vincent Scott, Risk Management Director. The insurance company is going to reimburse us thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. The original price of the tractor in which we purchased was thirty-eight thousand dollars. So there's new tractors on the new state contract at the forty-two thousand dollars. So therefore, there's the difference in the price there a little bit. We worked diligently with the insurance company as they looked at depreciation values and things of that nature. However, the tractor wasn't in service very long, so we worked kind of hard to get that, but it was, it was a tough, you know, tough pill to swallow there.
All right, so the seven thousand or so is going to come out of our general budget, is that correct? The surplus?
Yeah, probably.
How you doing, Florida District One?
So, we paid thirty-eight thousand dollars for the tractor, so now the insurance has lent us thirty-five thousand, so we probably depreciated three thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Thirty-eight to thirty-five?
About two thousand, three hundred, if they paid thirty-five, five, the original cost was thirty-seven, eight fifty, so it's about twenty-three hundred and something dollars of, I guess it's like a car when you crank it up and drive it off the showroom across, you just lost...
How long did we have it?
We, we received, I think we received some of them in about July, some of them in August, so we had it August, September, three months.
Practically neither.
Roughly three months.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
The only comment I have, I think we, excuse me, very blessed to, to have a vehicle that's not designed for a thirty-five or forty or fifty mile, fifty mile an hour crash, and as I understand, the driver was strapped in and had sustained little or no injuries.
Yes, sir.
And if you look at that, I do know, I went over and looked at it, and I think, it doesn't show here, but I think the front windshield is busted, and I don't know how that got busted, if I remembered that correctly. So, but anyway, I think it's...
I would like to thank the board, I, Chairman, I feel the same way. If our operator had been on one of our older model tractors, the cab, the way this tractor is with a cab and seatbelt and making him higher up, probably kept the vehicle off of him. The tractor, although it's a little hard to see, that tractor is completely in half. So the, the operator was able to remain in the cab, and again, just receive minor injuries. I'm not sure, well, we just feel blessed that, that he just did receive minor injury, so we want to kind of go back with, you know, an enclosed cab tractor, and we feel like that's a little better option for our operators.
Just one question, who was at fault in that?
The motorist was at fault. The motorist, we had a truck behind the tractor with its lights on, and then the motorist that passed the truck came two cars behind that truck and proceeded to go around him as he started to turn left to go into the road, so that's where he got the sideways collision.
Anybody else have any questions? District Three?
I'd like to ask you a question about this in regards to the safety, and I'm thankful that no body was injured, but do we transport all our tractors on the highway just like regular vehicle traffic?
This, this tractor was not being transported, he was deadheading or just driving it down eighty-one.
Yeah, and that's my question, do we, do we drive on all the state highways like that? I mean, or do we have a trailer to move our equipment around?
Commissioner, I think if we stopped every time we had to go down a state route a short distance and trailer it, it would greatly impede our, you know, our progress. This has lights on it, flashing lights, the truck behind it had flashing lights, I mean, that's something we could consider, but you, you're basically, would be involving another piece of equipment that would almost have to follow the tractor, you know, every time they got ready to cross or go down one of the state routes, or some of our, even some of our county roads are approaching volumes that are pretty close to a state route. So, you know, we, we've even met with Vincent, and, and we talked about how we might could, you know, make this part of our operation a little, a little safer, and, you know, trying to institute some things in-house because we are concerned about that and that very issue, and, you know, that's one of the reasons that, that I wanted to put the picture up here and discuss it a little bit here on the, at the board meeting, is to, you know, make our motorists aware that if they see the tractors out on our road, you know, just give us a little time, a little patience, and, you know, try not to go around them, you know, unless you can safely pass, but this, this whole operation, this accident, the motorist was, I mean, he, he just violated a bunch of rules that he shouldn't have done.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, we have a resolution to book the purchase of replacement tractor for a total Kubota M ninety-nine sixty, HFS ninety-nine, HP, two-wheel. Did you say this was a four-wheel drive?
Yes, sir, this is a four-wheel drive. That was the reason for the increase in the cost from thirty-seven to forty-two.
I got you, okay. Somebody move in that direction? Have a motion District One, second District Five, any further discussion, all in favor, motion, raise your right hand, all opposed, so move, thank you. Next, we have a resolution requesting approval of emergency repairs to Elliott Bridge Road. Terry?
Yes, sir, on, on December the eleventh of twenty fourteen, Henry County was notified by Georgia DOT that the bridge on Elliott Road over Walnut Creek was in critical condition and required immediate closing. That was on a Thursday afternoon, we closed it the following Friday. We met with GDOT Bridge Department officials that Monday in order to see what kind of repairs that could be made to the bridge in order to put it back into service. Once we had an idea of what kind of repairs need to be made, we put out, contacted five vendors and received quotes from those five. We awarded a contract to the lowest and most responsive bid, which was to Southern Concrete Construction Company in Albany for eighteen thousand dollars. County manager approved that for those emergency repairs with us, with knowing that we needed to come back before the board and correct the record, or is that the correct term? I think, correct the record. Let me add, which we did, the bridge was repaired, and we opened that bridge back up, I believe, Wednesday before Christmas, that, that Wednesday morning. So the bridge is now back into operation, and we were fortunate that the repairs that we made, we were able to up the bridge ratings. I'm not sure if, if the school bus can pass it over or not, but we did send those over to the Board of Education, so the bridge has been reposted with a higher rating than it did before the repairs were made. So depending on the way to the school bus, they may or may not be able to go across. I would like to add, so the public will know, that we were aware that this bridge was getting in need of repair, so the county had requested to have it funded by GDOT, I believe back in, I think in two thousand and twelve, it was added to the program for replacement, budgeted and funded and got in what I call the slot with GDOT for that replacement. That now is underway, the actual project is underway at GDOT, which the first part of this will be the design process, then any right-of-way utility relocations, because there is some utilities on that bridge, they'll have to be coordinated, and then, of course, construction, I believe, I believe this is scheduled for twenty seventeen construction. So we think these repairs that were made, they were done in... So we think these repairs that were made, they were done, uh, in order to get another five years out of that bridge. So this should sustain us until the bridge is put back in, or till the bridge is replaced. So I think it's important to note that we were aware that the bridge was getting in very bad repair and had started making some attempts to get that back in operation. We just didn't quite make it fast enough. So that's kind of the story on this. We're coming today just to get the board to approve this emergency action that we took in order to get this bridge back opened up.
Anybody have any questions or comment?
I'd like to have a comment. When Terry contacted me about the bridge, we was all very concerned, and like he stated, in two thousand seventeen, we're going to get that bridge replaced. And when it went out like it did, I was kind of hopeful that we would get the state to turn loose that two million dollars. And I contacted Senator Jeffries and Representative Rutledge, and they actually met with us out there at the bridge that day on that Monday. We all crawled up under the bridge and looked at it, and Terry was very receptive to go ahead and getting this fixed, and we were too, and, uh, the state's not going to turn loose that money no sooner than what they say they're going to turn loose. So this gets us by, and I certainly appreciate the board for supporting this measure because it was something that we really needed to get open back soon. We have three thousand calls that travel that road on a daily basis. So, uh, we, uh, just thank you, Terry, I appreciate it.
Did you move to approve the emergency repairs?
Moved to approve.
Have a motion to approve emergency repairs at the Elliott Road Bridge over Walnut Creek?
Second.
Who made the motion? Okay. Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution to question a bid to purchase turnout gear, Chief Johnson. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. This morning, it's a two-part resolution, the first part being the bid process itself. Bid number fifteen dash twenty-two was led by our purchasing department using standard guidelines for the purchase of turnout gear, our contract for our turnout gear, which is our protective equipment. This protective equipment was designed or designated by Lieutenant Henson, who handles our, our personal protective equipment for our department and determine this to be the best suited for our members. The first one is a resolution to approve the contract, no limited quantity specified to NAVCO, North American Fire Equipment, uh, to carry out our turnout gear needs.
Anybody have any questions? Tonight, we have a resolution to the Board, a resolution to the Board of Commissioners to awarding a bid for the purchase of firefighter turnout gear for the Henry County Fire Department. Have a motion District Five, second District Two, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, so move.
Thank you. The second part of this is the next resolution on the agenda is the purchase of thirty sets of the Lion V-Force VI Swing Turnout Gear Jackets and thirty trousers to go along with this. This is for replacement and to fit the new personnel that have been hired over the last few months that are recruit school at this time. The minimum amount for the contracted price is fifty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents to NAVCO Fire Equipment. I'll answer any questions on the purchase or...
Anybody have any questions or comment? Is not?
Just got one comment, I...
A question to you too, Brad.
Yes, sir.
Our older equipment that we have that we replace, I know we've had this discussion in the past, but there's a lot of volunteer departments that are still in the state of Georgia, probably the north part of Georgia. And I was just wondering, do we offer this older equipment to other fire stations, or what do we do with this equipment?
At this time, we lot it up for auction, if it is a auctionable thing. Gloves Incorporated and Marietta actually services our gear. We're required by NFPA to have our gear inspected monthly, which our guys do in-house. If there's issues with our gear, tears, uh, damage, it's sent to Gloves for repair and formal inspection. If they tag it out of service, or if it has an end-of-life year, you can, ten years is the end-of-life service for this gear. If it becomes end-of-life, in the past, we have been contacted by some departments, but we've not been allowed to do any donations of any kind. It's all had to be boxed up and either destroyed or sent to auction.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, we have a resolution, uh, the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the purchase of firefighter turnout gear for Henry County. Have a motion District One, second District Three, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution to question approval of a five-year capital improvement program for Henry County Airport.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. The Airport Capital Improvement Program provides grants to public entities for planning and development of public use airports that are included in the NPIAS. The Georgia Department of Transportation requires that a five-year CIP is submitted annually to identify both proposed and speculative capital improvement projects which may be undertaken within the five-year timeframe. In order to seek state and/or federal funding for any prospective project, the proposed project must be listed on the five-year CIP. Henry County is not obligated to fund any of these projects shown on the CIP for which an executed agreement does not already exist. County's airport manager and airport consultant for engineering, working in conjunction with GDOT, has developed an updated five-year CIP for the Henry County Airport, along with the required supplemental documents which are included in the packet. In this resolution, I'm asking the board hereby approves the airport CIP and authorizes staff to forward the CIP to the Georgia Department of Transportation and fully authorizes the chairman and/or the county manager to sign the required documents. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No question, we have a resolution, the Board of Commissioners approving a five-year capital improvement program for Henry County Airport. Have a motion District Two? Second from District Five, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have a resolution to question, uh, award of a bid to resurface tennis courts.
Good morning. We have two parks that has tennis courts that are in need of repair. One's at Sandy Ridge Park, one's at Hidden Valley Park. The purchasing department sent it out for bid. The bid's come back at twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars to repair the four tennis courts. Sandy Ridge is fourteen thousand, and that'd be paid out of SLOSH two funds, and fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty to repair Hidden Valley. And that'll come out of park improvement budget. At the present time, the courts are not playable. The cracks have spread and got so wide that they're a hazard, and they're not playable. I also like to add that, uh, in Hidden Valley, uh, there's four courts there, which makes it approved by Alta, be Alta certified to play league and tournament play out of those. And without those two courts, they're not, uh, they're not, we're not able to play league play on the north end of the county. So that is, uh, need for the repairs.
Anybody have any questions?
Tam, are these courts, are they going to be resurfaced, or are you just going to go and do the repairs and crack fill? I mean, what are you going to do?
What they do is, they come in, where you have a crack, they'll come in and grind it down, they'll fill it, they'll put a Geo Mesh on each side of it, and then they'll resurface the top of it, and that'll hold the two sides together, that'll keep them from cracking further.
How, how big do they resurface?
Uh, just like an inch, inch and a half. They just grind it down. What they do is they grind it down below the surface. They fill the crack with a polymer, then they put a Geo Mesh, like a wire mesh, on both sides and tack it in to both sides so that it won't crack anymore, then they fill it in. And then they'll also come back and repaint the courts as well. They'll repaint the courts, reline them, and everything, so they're like brand-new. They're not just fixing cracks, they paint the whole surface when they're finished. Excuse me?
How old are the courts?
They're older than, longer than I've been here. I know that, uh...
Because what you're describing is a subgrade issue, not a surface issue. So I just want to make sure that we're repairing the right, right things.
They're both more than fifteen years old, I can tell you that.
All right, it's settled out there.
At, um, the basketball court as well, that, um, needs to be repainted, resurfaced, or whatever you want to call it.
We can certainly, while they're out there, we can certainly get them to give us, get a price on it.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comment? We have a resolution in the book for the purpose of awarding a bid to resurface tennis courts for the Park and Rec Department. Have a motion District Five, second District, uh, Four. Any further discussion? If not, all raise your right hand, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of the minutes of October the twenty-first meeting, which is Exhibit Sixteen. Somebody move, we accept the minutes?
So move.
Have a motion from District One?
I have a question.
Sir?
Do I need to approve the minutes? I was here, but I wasn't up here.
No.
You can vote, you certainly don't have to. All you're doing is approving them as being official.
Yeah, you can vote, but it'd be kind of moot unless there's something else. We have a motion from District One, so, second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during any portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for a public comment must sign in with the county clerk. Prior to the beginning of the meeting, you must sign your name, address, and specific topic you wish to speak on, or you will not be recognized. You will be allowed, uh, five minutes. I take these in order that people signed up, and first, we have Jenny Tony. If you would, for the record, when you came to the podium, please list your name, address, please, and you have five minutes. And your topic is comments on people being able to speak.
Yes, sir, my name is Jenny Tony. I live at sixteen fifty-two Highway one fifty-five North, McDonough, Georgia. And my message is simple. I just, I think life is simple. I believe God put us here to spread the word about Him and to love one another. It's that simple. I also believe that we, the people, voted for the commissioners to do a, I know it's a hard job, but it's a simple job. You're just supposed to do the right thing, the right and honest thing for the people, for us. And, and I know, and I'll bring in the county commissioner, I know he wasn't elected, but he works for the people. We pay your salaries, the people of Henry County, we pay the salaries. So we should be able to question anything if we feel like it's odd. In our business, if we think something's odd's going on, we're not just going to turn our back and just let it go. We're going to question it. We had a girl working for us, and it was, at that time, it was me, Bill, and the girl. I ran to the post office, Bill was out of the office, but I trusted her. And so as I was coming back, the post office wasn't but a minute away, she slammed her trunk, went running in the building. To me, that was odd. So my duty, not only my right, it was my duty to question that. And come to find out, she was stealing from us, so I was right to question it. And in that, in that point, I'm not saying that y'all are crooked, but we as citizens have a right to question our commissioners, the people that work for us. And we have, if anything looks odd, that's our right. And not only is it our right, it's our duty. And for, for the commissioners, or the county manager, or anybody else to be arrogant about it, or try to intimidate us, or to call us names, that, that is not right. And so I just wanted to speak up and say that. I think that it's fair that the people speak up. And I know that several people have been intimidated, uh, not, not just us, but other people. And I, sometimes I don't, and this, this is purely my opinion, sometimes I don't even feel safe in my own county. And I'm not saying anything about the police, I believe the police are good, but sometimes you kind of feel like, Bill said, you feel like they're trying to shut you up, and, you know, maybe that's why the tires were stolen off of our cars. Maybe that's why things happen. So if I ever go missing, I want y'all to ask this, this group up here first, me and Bill. And that's all I got to say, we have a right to speak.
Next, we'd recognize, Ms. Jane Nescu Rutledge.
My name is Jane Nescu Rutledge. I live at eight fifty-eight Honey Creek Road, McDonough, Georgia. I also own a home at twenty-one sixty-eight New Hope Road, Locust Grove, Georgia. I am represented by District One, Beaumoss, District Three, Gary Borum. It is completely ridiculous that there is no ambulance at the fire station on Sandy Ridge Station on Keys Ferry. There is no ambulance in Old Jackson Fire Station on Old Jackson Road. I have supported every SLOSHed, every on the referendum, except for the T-SLOSH, which I was adamantly against and will be against from now till hell freezes over, or the Eagles come to the Omni. Every BOE SLOSHed I have supported. I do not agree with everything that everybody does, and nobody agrees with anything that I do because I'm going to speak my piece, say what I think. I'm not owned by anybody, and not one person donated to my campaign, okay? I feel that you need to put a hold on anything for Parks and Rec until you buy an ambulance and you hire EMS people and give those guys the equipment they need. I don't care if it puts us in the black, red, pink, or green. The number one thing in this county that we need is a nine-one-one system, we need a fire department, we need an EMS department. Sure, you're going to say, you got a truck out there, and you got one EMS person. Well, on June the fifth, two thousand five, I personally drove from eight fifty-eight Honey Creek Road to twenty-one sixty-eight New Hope Road before the fire truck got there and waited forever before an ambulance got there to transport my husband when he had the heart attack. We're ten years later, guys, where has all this SLOSH money gone? I want to see people hired. I don't care what you have to do to hire more EMS people. Two of y'all, three of y'all's getting to the age, just like myself, you're getting gray on the top. Three of you weren't even born in sixty-three. What are y'all thinking about ball fields, tennis courts, lacrosse fields? That's stupid, when you're not even servicing the main thing that a county needs. And I'm going to tell two of you, don't think you're going to threaten me and sit me down because I've found that there's not a copy of the Constitution in this building. But by God, I will personally buy one and bring it to the meeting and see if y'all've got the titanium backbone to erect it because my constitutional rights, Mr. Preston and Mr. Holmes, are not going to be violated. And I don't care if you run to Dale Rutledge, Rick Jeffries, or whoever you want to run to. You're not going to sit me down and say, I can't be on a public comment. You guys are just public servants. It is totally ridiculous, the way you treat the citizens, and the priorities are not in order. I do not think that you are treating the county employees like you should be. That's my observation. I think for myself, I pay my way, and none of you will have to worry about... I think for myself, I pay my way, and none of you will have to worry about running against me. Because the person I'm gonna be running against is Dale Rutledge. I'm gonna get somebody in the Capitol that's got a backbone and a spine. Thank you.
Next, we have Chairman, or Commissioners' comments. Anybody have any comments?
I did.
Okay.
First, I mean, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Prince on board, and also like to congratulate Bruce on his recent wedding. And I have several corrections I'd like to make, where gentlemen stepped up to speak about some of the properties we own and what we owe on them. The park, 20 acres on Jonesboro Road, we didn't pay 2.2 million dollars for it. McDonough paid half of that. The airport, we didn't pay 17.7 million dollars for it. We paid 2.7 million dollars for it. And talking about selling properties, we, we owe about 12 million dollars on the golf course. We had it appraised at about 2.2 million, if I'm correct, I'm not sure. But would we want to sell a piece of property and it still owe 10 million dollars on it? Absolutely not. It's just not a good business sense. And another comment from the lady, we do have an ambulance on Old Jackson. It's staffed with three EMTs, if I'm not correct. I think we have some firemen here.
Commissioner, this is halfway correct. We do have approval for that ambulance station to be a day truck, part-time. Problem is, due to attrition and people leaving the service, we have not been able to staff that truck. The people that are in training now, their recruit school, we have 12, 11 members in recruit school. When they're finished recruit school, finished training, then that ambulance will go.
We have the equipment there.
There's an ambulance sitting there that we can put up. The ambulance is there, and also, the ambulance is in splotched. There's a used ambulance there now, that's equipped, but there's new ambulance in splotched, been approved for that station. That's in our next purchase.
And we've already budgeted the money to pay the staff that with three EMTs.
Yes, we have three personnel that before a day truck, a part-time truck only, not there 24 hours a day. But they're in training now, and, and we're definitely on our way to getting that done.
Well, I stand corrected. I thought we already had them in place.
We had planned on, on the budget, just the personnel, getting people to staff the trucks that are issued right now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What's the timeline?
Timeline on that is probably three more months getting that done. We're about to go out now again for another fast track, which is already trained personnel. Try to get that in. We have currently 11 in recruit school, 15 other openings. So due to personnel leaving over the last year, it's kind of put us in a bind staffing-wise. The guys did a great job. They've been filling in, working overtime, even some required overtime, just for minimum staffing. And I applaud them for their, their stepping up to the plate, making sure our trucks are covered and protecting the public. But the new mission stuff is kind of on hold until we get our staffing back up.
Yeah, the only thing I always go add, because I think we did things a little different in this splotch. There's, I believe there's, I just want to make sure you could fact-check this. We have three fire stations that are gonna be added in the coming few years as part of the new splotch projects. And this is the first splotch that I believe that instead of us looking at it as by district, we looked at it by countywide, by needs. So we made sure we got as much coverage as possible with, for all of our citizens. You know, in the past, it was all district-based, I believe, and now we decided to make it a priority and make it county-based.
And you're definitely, you're correct, Mr. Preston. The, in the past, this is the first splotch we've ever had equipment, been allowed to put equipment in the splotched to purchase, to replace. We've done fire stations, completed, all of our fire stations in the past 10 years have been splotched stations, none out of a general budget, but no equipment has ever been purchased through splotched until this year. The new stations, we're replacing Station Two and Tier One, which comes with a new engine and a new ambulance. Station 14, 15, 16 is on track, on the splotched project plans to start hopefully by, by spring on the first station. And it also has equipment, new equipment in them stations also. Our number one issue right now we have is our outdated equipment. We have not replaced any of the equipment. We have some 1994 units running today. And, you know, they're 21 years old. This out there is our first out apparatus that are really, really strengthening the department. Thanks to the guys, the way they treat them, treat them well, make them last, and our maintenance personnel, our DOT, they're the only things keeping us running right now. So that's our problem.
I'm pretty sure you and the county manager have been working together to make sure all this is implemented?
Yes, sir. Definitely trying to get a plan together and try to get our replacement plan we've had in place for years. Try to get to a point where we can actually incorporate that into our, our, our general budget every year.
So these things were in place for years, but they didn't get implemented until we got the new county manager, correct?
The county manager and, and funding.
Thank you.
Funding available. Yes, sir.
I think a while ago, it was kind of said that we were gonna spend another $600,000 on the golf course. And according to the lease and that I've spoke to and looked at, was that we're gonna spend $40,000. And the people that are leasing it are gonna spend $500,000 to redo the greens. I think we're gonna do a little work on the buildings and do a little work on some of the cart paths, but...
Nope, we're not. We are. Are you three? Anybody else have any comments? Yes, sir.
I just want to address, because I want to make sure that we don't misquote or misunderstand. The public comments is definitely, we're in the United States of America, and God bless us for being able to have free, freedom of speech. I think there may be a misunderstanding is that Commissioner Holmes sent, sent an email, and then I sent an email saying I agree, is that we don't want to see the agenda used as a weapon. And we've, we always have had public comments. Public comments has never been trying to take away from the agenda. But when you have favoritism where one or two people get put on the agenda every month and get 15 minutes versus five minutes like everybody else in the public, it doesn't seem equal, it doesn't seem fair. And that's all that was asked, is saying, why do we, why do we put, because we could, I mean, if we got to the point where this turned into, turning the agenda into a weapon, we could all load up our friends and family and everybody else to come in here and give them 15 minutes, and we'd be here until the cows came home. So that's why we've tried to create public comments for everybody to come up here, express your free will, express your concerns. We don't try to restrict that at all. We just want to make sure that it's fair, it's equal, because that's also part of the United States of America, is make sure we're all equally provided for and that favoritism is not provided with the agenda. And that's all. I just want to make sure, because when, when my name gets called out, Commissioner Holmes gets called out, I mean, I have never tried to restrict freedom of speech. I mean, that, that frustrates me to hear that. I just want to make sure that we're equal and fair with the treatment of everybody in regards, so that we can move this county forward.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comment? Do you have?
It's my first day. I want to say thank you to everyone. I appreciate being up here. Some of the things that I'll be working on over the next four years, we are looking at the land that we've acquired. And we'll be starting to see what we can get rid of and what we, we have to keep. Another thing that I'm gonna be looking at, the future land use plan. You know, over the last couple of months, we've had some zoning issues come up, and we really need to sit down and take a look at the future land use plan to make sure Henry County's going in the direction that we all agree it should go in. And the last thing is we're doing, and this comes back to the fire department stuff, is our strategic plan. You know, I had six months to get ready to come and sit up here and got to kind of peel back the onion. And we really don't have a strategic plan county-wide implemented. And the strategic plan will have maintenance of vehicles and also maintenance replacement, a fleet management plan, and how we're gonna spend our money for the next 10 years. And that's gonna work into with the fire department, how we can make sure we have ambulances in the places that need to be, and fire trucks where they need to be, and that the police have the equipment to do what they need to over a longer period of time. So that's kind of gonna be my agenda for the next four years, and I'd like to say I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
I would like for him to express whatever was on his mind.
Is what now?
The county manager had a couple of comments he wanted to make.
But he, it's not his time yet.
But I'm asking if the county manager can make comments.
Not right now. He, he will have his opportunity to make comments. But this is the chairman and the Commissioner's comment time now.
I yield the floor.
So he yields the floor. So I'm, I'm not gonna allow that, because he has on the agenda. He comes next.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So having said that, anybody else have any comments for the board? Okay. We're at the point of my career, I've been serving two years. And I've had some difficulty with the board, and they've had difficulties with me, and we're trying to resolve our issues. But having said that, I'm gonna read to you what I call the open letter to the citizens of Henry County, because I work for you. I don't work for the board. I work for you. And y'all can make your own decision as to how you want us to move forward, because we definitely got to move forward one way or another. On January the 1st of 2013, I had the honor of beginning a four-year term to serve you as the Chairman of the Henry County Board of Commissioners. I took the oath to uphold the laws of the land. I take this oath very seriously. Honor and duty in service are core principles that guide me every day. I learned duty and honor from being an Eagle Scout. I was proud to serve in the military. I retired from the Federal Aviation Administration as an air traffic controller after 32 years of service. I had the privilege of serving my friends and neighbors as the mayor of the city of Hampton for 24 years. I was proud to serve as executive assistant to the Henry County Board of Commissioners for seven years. When I retired from the FAA, I went to work for the Board of Commissioners. While in that position, I was asked to serve many different capacities, including purchasing director, human resource director, code enforcement director, and thanks to Jason Harper, the chair at the time, I was director of animal control. These positions gave me great insight into the day-to-day workings of county government. Needless to say, I felt I was ready to hit the ground running on day one of serving you as Chairman of this great county. By county charter, the Chairman is the chief executive officer of the county. This has been the case since 1991, when the citizens of this county voted by referendum to amend the charter to create this position and duties that go along with it. The duties of the Chairman are different from duties of district commissioners. By charter, the Chairman, as CEO, may delegate administrative duties to the, to a county manager. Ever since 1992, this has been allowed, chairmans have been allowed to function in an elected position until now. Since taking office, I have chosen to exercise my right to vote. The charter states the Chairman shall be a full voting member of the board. I believe the citizens have a right to know where the Chairman stands. There are district commissioners that do not want me to exercise this right. I take issue with the public, public accusations made by the distinguished gentleman District Fire Commissioner in the December 16th meeting. He and the other commissioners think that all I want to do is to fire all the department heads of the county. Nothing can be further from the truth. As I have said repeatedly, I believe that our employees are our best assets. And the ones that was here when I was the mayor of Hampton and I worked with them, the ones that was here when I was executive assistant can attest to that, that I know that our employees is the best asset. I am committed to ensuring that we have policies in place that protect employees and public. The board and I have disagreed on several personnel issues. For example, the county has an obligation to ensure that your tax dollars are being properly used. When I learned that certain police officers were engaging in sexual misconduct while on duty and at times inside county vehicles, I demanded that action be taken. When I learned that some of the misconduct involved the most vulnerable in society in female subordinates, and that upper police management was not taking sufficient action to rid the department of this behavior, I called for a change in leadership of the police department. The board refused to act upon this. I believe it is wrong for a county employee to violate county policy and state law by transporting an infant in the front seat of a county car on county time. The lack of judgment is worsened by the fact that the employee lied about the incident until there was a mention of a videotape footage from a local convenience store that she attended. I brought this up to the board for attention to the board. They refused to take action. I believe that it is unfair to fire a county employee for using a curse word in a meeting with her bosses when one of the bosses had used the same word himself. This was brought to the attention of the board. Once again, the board refused to take action. I believe that firing a department head and eliminating a department under the guise of saving money without having any calculations to save money to be more efficient is wrong. I believe it is illegal when the department head who is being fired was the victim of harassment in the workplace by other department heads. An independent outside investigation found the incident of the harassment true, and the perpetrator department head received 40 hours off without pay. However, she is now fired, and he is still, has his job, and additional allocations have been filed against him by his female coworkers to this date. I brought this to the attention of the board. The board continues to refuse to act. I have stood alone, invoiced in opposition to these matters. I offer no apology. I take my oath to faithfully uphold the laws very seriously. I will continue to serve the citizen to the best of my ability and in accordance and responsibility set forth in the charter that was approved by you, the people, and not the politicians. I was elected upon my campaign promise of changing the way we do business in Henry County. My mission has been to conduct county business in the light of day, for all of us to see it, to treat our employees fairly, and make sure the county operates a physically conservative manner. The commissioners continue to complain and say that I'm not a team player. The distinguished commissioner from District Two even met with me early on to say that the commissioners did not like my leadership style. When I inquired about the specific complaints, he stated that if majority of the commissioners agree on a matter, then I should be with them and vote along with them. We are not elected to come to a consensus. Elected officials develop the best solutions when they each bring their perspective and constituent concerns to the table. We will not always change each other, excuse me, each other's mind. However, we will vote and move in the direction of the majority vote. I have a track record of that, and they can attest to this. Whether I like it or not, when they do a resolution, it gets done el pronto. I certainly understand the art of compromise, as it is something that we all do every day. It's not just limited to politicians. It's something we do every day. I would not have been elected to public office for over 30 years without understanding how and when to give and take. However, there are some issues which, upon which I was simply not willing to compromise. And for that, I make no apologies. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Not, we'll open the floor up for comments from the county manager. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also like to welcome Commissioner Prince and congratulate Commissioner Holmes on his recent wedding. I've been asked by a couple of commissioners for this first meeting of the year to sort of do a snapshot of last year, the 2014 year in review, and also to, to sort of give the, the citizens a primer of where we're headed in 2015. Before we look back at 2014, we've got to sort of look at the function of government, ask ourselves some questions. As we look at the year in review, were we good stewards of the people's money? Did we maintain a strong public safety footprint? Have we enhanced government services to our citizens? Are we taking care of our employees, and are we posturing the county for smart growth and business expansion? Some highlights, were we good stewards of the people's money? Board passed 127.5 million budget last year, and still returned over a million dollars to our property owners by rolling back the millage rate on property taxes. We saved almost a million dollars in interest payments by refinancing a number of the county's outstanding loans. And we passed a splotched bond for important splotch projects at a historically low interest rate, and bonded only the amount of money we needed, keeping interest payments at a bare minimum. Did we maintain a strong public safety footprint? Friends, we have the lowest crime index in our surrounding metro Atlanta counties. Hats off to the Henry County Police Department. Now, the crime index is computed at the amount of crime for every 1,000 citizens. Our sits at around 29. There are counties around...
Fire Department also moved into a new fire training academy building that if you haven't seen, you should go see it. It is the envy of other fire departments in Georgia and throughout the southeast. Our emergency management agency and staff were a model of efficiency, protecting lives and property during two winter weather events last year that paralyzed the metro Atlanta area. Have we enhanced government services to our citizens? We've implemented NeoGov, an online employment application program for prospective employees. We've enhanced the security protocols and procedures and capabilities in our courthouse building and our new judicial complex. And our tax commissioner opened the first self-service kiosk for vehicle tag removal, renewal in the south metro Atlanta area, and I think only the fourth in the state of Georgia. Are we taking care of our employees? We gave all of our employees a much-needed and well-deserved pay raise of 2% last July. And we gave our public safety employees an additional 2% effective just last week on January the 1st. We also made responsible changes to our employee-defined benefit retirement plan. The county is now able to keep a defined plan for future employees, and we simultaneously strengthened the existing plan for our current employees. Are we posturing the county for smart growth and business expansion? The amount of time for applicants to receive a building permit has shrunk from an average of three weeks to now around two days. The Henry County Water Authority restructured water rates and impact fees for commercial businesses, making Henry County much more attractive to prospective businesses. Our Development Authority Board has hired a new director, he was introduced today, and they've launched a new website and business portal entitled "Henry County: Connecting Business in Atlanta's New South." These are just a few of the highlights for 2014 that were easily recognizable and noteworthy. What I didn't mention were the thousands of heroic and necessary deeds being accomplished every day by our talented and capable county workforce of almost 1,600 employees. You know, we live in a complex, growing society, and daily, our employees are patrolling our streets, rushing people to the hospital, answering emergency phone calls, caring for abandoned and abused animals, paving roads, fixing potholes, keeping records, enhancing the quality of life for our senior citizens, operating our jail, transporting citizens around the county, keeping our equipment running and operational, repairing our buildings, issuing permits and tags, educating our children, enforcing code violations, assessing property value, collecting fees and taxes, balancing our financial books, procuring and purchasing equipment, running our court system, prosecuting criminals, mowing our grass, running sports tournaments, running elections, keeping our computer systems operational, and putting out fires, both literally and figuratively. And the list goes on and on and on. You know, as I begin to talk about 2015, I would like for everyone here, since we're on TV, to give a well-deserved round of applause to all the county employees and our departments who did so much in 2014 to move this county forward. Now, looking to 2015, we want to remain completely open and transparent with our citizens. So I want to give you a quick primer on the things that we're going to be working on this year so we can begin a healthy dialogue and debate. First, I'm happy to report that our department heads are doing an excellent job at managing the funds in their budget. That, and an increase in property values and collections, puts us in a position to have additional money now, today, to begin purchasing some desperately needed vehicles and equipment for our fire department, police department, transportation department, animal control department, and our code enforcement department. I hope to bring these purchase requests to the Board of Commissioners in the next 90 days. These equipment purchases won't get us healthy, but they will help stop the bleeding and replace some equipment that has far exceeded its useful life. Next, the budget the staff and I will build and present to the board for 2015, 2016 will likely exceed $130 million. 2009 was the last year the county adopted a budget in excess of $130 million. These increases over our current budget will be the result of hiring new firefighters for the new fire stations being built and constructed through SPOLOST. SPOLOST doesn't pay for people. Payments into our pension and group retirement plans and insurance plans, and another modest pay raise for our employees. That said, the tax assessor tells me that property values are still on the rise in Henry County. What that means is we anticipate being able to afford $130 million-plus budget next year, while remaining optimistic that the commissioners will still have an opportunity to return some money back to our property owners in the form of another partial millage rate rollback. In 2015, we plan to adopt a new personnel policy manual and a new code for purchasing and procuring equipment, goods, and services. We will continue to reduce debt and find additional savings by refinancing other loans that the county is responsible for. We will also complete a fiber optic loop throughout the county's emergency services that give us more backup and greater redundancy to our computer networks. We will also construct an additional courtroom in the judicial complex to help mitigate any backlogs in our judicial system, and we will also explore the merits of having a health clinic just for our employees. We are a growing county and a county on a move. A remaining concern is the stagnant tax collections in our commercial tax base. We need to grow jobs and bring new businesses into Henry County. Our residential property owners continue to shoulder a disproportionate percentage of our property revenue collections. The best way, the best way to reduce this burden on our residential property owners is to grow our commercial tax base, and the best way to do that is to recruit new businesses and create new jobs in Henry County. And we are all responsible for job creation, the Board of Commissioners, the Development Authority, me, my department heads, all of our employees, and our citizens. You may be the tipping point that determines whether somebody chooses to locate a business in Henry County. So we must grow our commercial tax base to catapult this county to the next level. In 2015, let all of us commit to promoting and marketing and showcasing all that is right and good about Henry County. Let's minimize the distractions. Minimize the distractions and remain positive and upbeat and focus on the goodness of our county and the good work of our employees. As an old Army sergeant major once told me, "In everything you do, always, always show your class." With that, I yield back my time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. County attorney, you have anything?
No, sir, I don't have anything.
Upcoming meetings, all the county offices will be closed January the 19th in accordance of Martin Luther King holiday Tuesday, January the 20th at 6:30 PM, a regular board meeting. Tuesday, February the 3rd, 9 AM, a regular board meeting. I understand we've got two issues to go into executive session based on pending litigation. If somebody would move, we're going to executive session to make a motion to adjourn executive session in accordance with the provision of OC GA 15-14-3 and other applicable laws impertinent to the advice of county attorney for the purpose of pending and/or potential litigation.
I'll move.
Have a motion District 1?
Second.
Second District, no, we have a motion from District 3. Have a second District 4. Any further discussion, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. We're going into executive session at this moment. Thank you for coming, because I know mostly of y'all will probably leave.